So today, we're going to talk about our draft 2024 budget with our study session. I thought it might be nice if we did a brief introductions of the board and who's at the table, because we have Emily and Ramona here, and I'll have them introduce themselves as well. So Greg, would you mind kicking us off?
No. Hello, everybody. Craig Thomas, board member. This is my final meeting.
Morgan McMillan.
President.
Look, there's an board member.
Lexi Nolan, BCPH Director.
Ezra Kazerosian, Finance.
From the Environmental Club, Division Manager.
Again, the administrative support.
Jordan Thomas, Business Operations Coordinator.
Hi, Kevlin, Health and Research. What do you name?
Then I'll jump to our Division Managers that are on before we go to Emily and Ramona. So Heather, do you want to start?
Sure. Heather Cray, they've been theirs, and I'm the Community Health Division Manager.
Daphne?
I'm disabled. I'm disabled.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So it says that, sorry, it says that I'm turned off here, so I don't know what it is. Anyway, I'm glad you can hear me. I am right around the corner, and I'm the Family Health Division Manager, so I'm just going to hop in the car and run on in.
Thank you. And Indira?
Hi, I'm Indira Gushrol. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Division Manager for Communicable Disease and Emergency Management.
Thank you. And our esteemed guests, we'll start with Ramona.
Hi, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there in person with you today. Ramona Farinow, Chief Financial Officer for Boulder County.
Emily?
Hi, everybody. Emily Beam. I'm the Budget Officer with the Office of Financial Management for Boulder County.
Thanks, Emily. And I see Lindy just joined. Lindy, do you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Lindy Hidman, Board Member.
Thank you. Okay, so can you change slides? All right, so just run through the agenda real quick. We did introductions. I'm going to review the agenda that's happening now. Then we'll kick it over to Ramona and Emily, who will do a county budget overview. After that, we're going to break out a few separate sections that help us with the study process. So there's the budget process, overall, what occurred this year, considerations that impacted our overall compilation of the budget, budget review, so actually showing you what our estimates are for 2024, as well as some comparisons and FTE changes. And then we'll just talk about next steps. So what are the, what's the process forward, as well as any feedback and questions? I'm going to try to leave at least 20 minutes, but what I would say is, as we go, please ask questions, so I make sure that I address anything that comes up. And for those of you that are in the room and may not have heard, Jordan, our screens are broken. So try to avoid looking at them as much as possible, which I know is hard, so you don't get vertigo. So, okay, so with that being said, I'll go ahead and kick it over to Ramona and Emily.
All right. Well, thanks again, everybody, for having me. I know that I'm here just to kind of give you an overview of where the county is for our budget process for 2024. But first, I want to just introduce Emily again. I know she just introduced herself, but Emily's been with the county with finance since 2009, Emily, correct? 2009, starting our Climate Smart Program and moved into a couple of various positions. Finally was, not finally, but became our Financial Controller, Financial Systems Controller, and now, just this year, has now moved into the Budget Officer position. So she started after our budget instructions. You're, you know, you get to hear from me again this year. We're kind of tag teaming the budget process this year for the first cycle, and next year, you'll have the pleasure of having Emily present to you. So feel free to ask us any questions as we go on. What I'm going to present to you is what I presented to all the elected officials in department heads back in May, at the beginning of our budget process, which was basically what we call our budget instructions or our budget guidance, to give you the economic look right now at what the county looks like and what we're projecting for the next year, which was, of course, was still, you know, it's in flux. It's moving around all the time. You know, that was an hour and a half, so I only have a short time with you. So I'm going to give you the abridged version, but then I'll put the budget guidance in the chat when I'm done. And I don't know, you said your screens are broken. I can also share as I go with some of the graphs. I don't know if that, at least for some of you online, might be helpful. So I'll jump in, and again, if I see hands, I'm happy to, you know, happy to stop at any point and just answer questions. Or, you know, later, after you read the instructions, if you have any questions, just reach out to Emily and I, and we'd be happy to answer those or call you or, you know, whatever you need. So on my end, I'm going to open up my instructions. So the 2020 budget process, like I said, it started in May. Our systems opened in June. And what we shared with the EODH is that 2024 is a little bit of a mystery year. We're going to have to come up with two different budget scenarios. Because basically, if you, I'm sure you've probably heard that Proposition HH is on the ballot, and I actually have links to all the language. If you really want some bedside information, you know, I'll send those out. It's in the message. But basically, we're uncertain for future years. If that HH passes, which it does sound favorable to pass, it would reduce our residential assessment rate, again, going forward. So let me just go back to some, just as a review. Our most recent forecasts that I'm going to be showing you are modeled under the guidance of the Senate bill from last year, which reduced the residential assessment rate from 7.15% in 2022 to 6.765% in 2023. And we also remain under the 5% revenue growth mandated by the state. So just as a recap there, you know, your school districts, your special district, your fire districts, whatever their property tax increases are, they can take the full amount. So, you know, that's the misnomer with county government. We're different. So when property taxes escalate, you know, when our value is escalating as they are, other entities can take that full value as it relates to revenue. We cannot. We can only take 5.5% growth. So that's, you know, it's a little bit different for us than the rest of, you know, rest of the districts in the county. So, you know, when you, when you hear that property taxes are going up, they are, but on a smaller scale for us. So if HH passes, the impact, let's see, let me get my numbers straight. The residential, I say, rest of the state assessment rate would drop again to 6.7%. Now, we still don't think that's going to have any impact, per se, on 2024 because of that 5.5%, because things are growing so much. Even though the rate goes down, the growth goes up, we would probably hit that 5.5 cap again. So regardless of whether it passes, it shouldn't really affect our 2024 budget. Our problem is, it will start affecting us '25, '26, '27. You know, we're going to get to the point where it really will be impactful. So we don't want to just think about 2024. We have to look out to the future. And Cindy Braddock gets us our numbers in late August. We get the actual numbers in of what assessments look like. So we'll have a better view at that point. And again, we have to wait for November to see what happens with HH. But again, there's more data here, probably more than you want to hear, so I'll move on. But what I really wanted to show you is what I showed the board, some, the board and the EODH, some graphs that regardless of whether this passes or not, these graphs are based upon our current assessment rates and our revenue. And I'm wondering, am I able to share my screen? Let's see, let me go back. I know you have your buddy, budget session up there, your agenda. Would I be able to share? Maybe?
Oh, you can share over, Rita, right now?
Can I share over? Okay.
Yeah, you can try it.
Let me try it. Okay, so let's, let's see what we got here. Bear with me. My worst quality is sharing my screen. Here we go. Okay. Are you, are everybody able to see some graphs now? It looks like I'm sharing.
Yes.
Okay, so this is, there's two graphs that I really wanted to show you in our limited time. This is our general fund, and anything that we budget to.
Ramona?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but do you mind making it a little bit bigger?
I don't know if I can.
Ramona, in the body, yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Yeah, again, my technical skills are not what I'm hired for, so. So thanks for bearing with me. Okay, so what you're, what you're seeing now is our general fund, based on, you know, no changes related to the ballot measure. So our general fund is what we fund you folks out of public health. Anything that you receive from us, other than, for example, ARPA funds, you know, the general money that you receive from us comes from the general fund. And with no change, actually, yeah, this is a good, with no changes, you can see what's going to happen if we don't make some changes in what we're doing countywide. I'm not talking about directly for public health, but countywide. By 2028, you know, our ending fund balance, that orange line, goes negative. So it's very, we're unsustainable. We're financially currently unsustainable. So what the board has been talking about is, honestly, what do we stop doing? We're a wonderfully progressive county, but if we don't make some changes, we have a negative fund balance, which of course would be against state law. We can't, you know, we can keep using fund balance. It's legal to have a balanced, a balanced budget by using your fund balance, but we're doing that every year. And by 2028, we'd be negative, which obviously would violate state law. So we have to make some changes sooner rather than later. So I did want to share that. This is another graph that shows you what's, why it's happening. You've got your operating expenses, this is the accounting as a whole, escalating every year, you can see through 2028. And our revenues, they also escalate, but not at the same rate. So this is why the board is very, very concerned and has been watching every dime and every nickel of what they're approving going forward. One of the big things, of course, is personnel. That's our biggest, that's our biggest expense county-wise. And as you know, with personnel, when you hire personnel, of course, that escalates every year because there are raises and cost of living adjustments and increases to benefits, et cetera. So it's really tough on the board because they consider our staff the most important, if you want to say, asset that they have, and they don't like balancing the budget on their folks. They'll be making their compensation decisions in September, prior to adopting, you know, a budget and giving us direction in November and adopting in December, because that's most important. So, but there's a trade-off, you know, as we add to personnel, to wage growth, it's hard to also add FTE. One year, a couple of years ago, we added a lot of FTE. Last year, we added to salaries, but we can't do both. So that's, that's a conversation, actually, we're continuing next week with the board on what 2024 will look like. So I wanted to share that. So that's our general fund. Now, our sales and use taxes. I'll show you this graph. This was also somewhat concerning. There's more details in here, but I won't go into all the details because you've got a lot to talk about today. This was disconcerting to me because, yes, the line, the blue line, is 2023. This was only through March. But you can see the growth gap, you know, it's, we're not climbing, you know, we can see the, we can see what's happening with, with our sales taxes. They are slowing. Don't know if that is the economy. Don't know if that's because we had sharp inclines when internet sales were, obviously, weren't taxed prior to a couple of years ago. Now they are all taxed. There was some grandfathering in. Everybody has to collect now. So that could be part of it, too. But I'm going to unshare this one, and then I'm going to share another screen of a more recent sales tax because that was only through April. So bear with me again. Let me share another graph. Now, this is only updated, see if I can make it a little bigger. This is only updated through April. May and June, we're going to be analyzing this week. June just came in. But look what happened in April. I got very concerned. We dropped below. You know, we're still overall have an increase over, you know, 20, this is 2023 over 2022. We still have it, an increase, but we dipped way below. Now, this is before the new Costco opened up there in Longmont, so, you know, there'll be no sales coming in there. But just the look of the graph is very disconcerting. So our sales taxes, too, they don't fund any of your programs. However, what the board's looking at is making sure that, making sure we move over what we can. So if there are some general fund expenses that can be paid for out of, for example, the open space tax or our sustainability tax, we're looking at moving some of those expenses over in the budget. But if the line keeps dipping on the sales tax side, then there, you know, obviously, we've got a little bit of issue there. So that, that is, that is that. Let me go back and I'll share the other. I can, I can pause here, though, if there's questions. I feel like doom and gloom. I'm just giving you what, I'm just giving you the graphs and the numbers as they look right now. But I have just a couple more comments, but I can pause here if there's any questions or wait till the end. That's fine, too.
I mean, I have a couple of questions, Ramona, but I can wait if you want to finish up and then.
Okay, I'll finish up. I'll finish up. Like I said, I don't want to take all your time, so I will go back and share my other, my other screen again. Well, I might have closed it, so let me, bear with me. All I can talk while I'm opening it back up, so I'll have to take your time. Basically, what I wanted to let you know, in fact, I don't probably need to share. I can just speak to it. What I wanted to talk to you about is what the budget guidance then said. And Emily, feel free to chime in here if I miss something because I don't have it open right now, so I'm kind of doing it from memory. Because Emily's, Emily's meeting with every department head and elected official. She'll be meeting here shortly this month with Lexi and Catherine and your accounting team to go through all of what the board is requesting. And so she's living and breathing these every day, so jump in when I miss something. So what the board's asked this year is that we do some what-ifs with your budget request to Boulder County. There's two what-ifs. And the first one isn't related to the economy. It's really to start thinking about, believe it or not, 2025. What would you do with 3% more in your budget to promote the racial equity goals of the county? So this, these are memos that we're asking for. They're not things that'd be asked for in the budget, but the board would like to get everybody stuck thinking about that because we will be trying to implement equity budgeting in 2025. There's a lot to it. We need to have a lot of things put in place, but it's start thinking about it. What would you do with 3% more? Now, conversely, because of HH, also want to think about, again, wouldn't be, in my opinion, anything for this year, but looking into the future, if you had to cut, I know that's a hard word, but we don't, you know, our main goal is never to have a layoff. So what would you do? What programs would you cut? What activities would you cut? If you got 3% less from the county, what would you do? And again, this is future thinking. We don't want anybody to be surprised, not anticipating it for 2024. But we do have to have those, you know, open thoughts in our mind if things in the economy should continue to move downward for the county. We're asking that any FTEs that are requested to be put in our recommended budget that comes from us to the board. FTEs would only be recommended if they are backed by a reduction in your operating expenses. So we're trying to hold a line on FTEs unless you can basically fund them by reducing your operating. So FTEs are going to be a hard sell this year because it really increases that expense budget line. Let's see. Emily, help me out here. It's rote memory. I know you know, I know you know them by heart. I could open it back up. Do you want to just cover the other few?
Yeah, so we are requesting, the commissioners did a study to review all training. And there was a survey done, an employee survey, sorry, I was echoing. There was an employee survey completed, and the survey indicated that employees didn't feel like they were getting enough training. So one thing that they're doing for the county is they're realigning, asking departments to realign training budgets to ensure that every employee is allocated $1,000 to their training budget line items to allow for external trainings to, to improve, you know, employee development and make sure that everybody has that kind of available to them. So all departments are looking at that, and we've done some analysis to provide some headcount and dollars budgeted for fiscal year 2024. Let's see, you've got the memo, you've had the equity increase, decrease, training.
Yeah, I just pulled, I just pulled up the instructions, so.
Oh, thank you.
Since I had closed them. So what else do we have here? Oh, this doesn't really affect you, but I already mentioned it. We're asking all the department heads and elected officials that manage any sales tax funds to do a full analysis. What could they move, move out of the general fund into those, into those sales taxes, so that could be helpful. In fact, you know, for example, OSCAR, our Sustainability Division, technically, their entire general fund budget could be paid for out of sales tax, so it's not off the table that that would happen, which, of course, you know, could affect, you know, some of their initiatives. But they do have a pretty healthy fund balance over there, as well as open space, so I don't think it would change any of their goals. Let's see. Other things that don't involve your office, we're just looking at what our policy should be on fund balance, looking at our disaster reserve fund to see what policy, should we change the policy around that? But again, that doesn't, I mean, it does affect you because of disasters, but not anything for you all to, you know, concentrate on. And that, oh, well, I should mention one other thing about FTEs. I said, you know, they have to be covered by an operating. The exceptions to those, in order to be in a recommended budget, where, you know, that we, the board would have to, you know, actually pull them out. We would actually recommend anything that's federally or state mandated. I know we're all, you know, feeling more and more of the hit of, you know, unfunded mandates by the state. So if you have any, any of those mandates, things that need to, need to happen for state or federal guidelines, those, those needs through FTE, you should mention that in your ask because those would be, those would be taken into account first. Or if you have a new revenue stream, something new that's coming in, a new grant or something like that, again, that doesn't affect our general fund. So those type of FTEs would be supported first. And I think that.
The very last thing, I think the very last thing is that we are reviewing the budgeting for equity process. And so with those 3% increase memos, we're asking all departments to fill out the, use the racial equity assessment tool. And then we are going to be presenting kind of a new business practice to the board for going forward so that all of our budget requests are reviewed and analyzed to ensure that they comply with our strategic priorities, and we're working on preparing a budgeting for equity definition for Boulder County.
Yeah. And again, your requests this year don't have to include that analysis.
No.
Except, but, you know, running things through the memo would, would be, but, you know, it's good practice to get into since we'll be needing that next year. But I know at this point in the budget cycle, it's pretty hard for all department heads, elected officials to gather all that, especially when, you know, the racial equity team is pretty small at this point. So basically, budget season will probably start earlier next year because there'll be a little bit more work for people to do. I know that was really fast. I will share the message. There's a lot more fun bedtime reading in there. I know you'd love to all read it. So I will share it, but I know there might be some questions that I'd be happy, Emily, or I'd be happy to answer.
I've got, I've got one. Thank you, Ramona and Emily. Can you just give us another big picture? It was a little unclear to me. So assessments went up 30, 40%. The county can only keep 5.5% of that? Is that what you're saying? And then?
That's, that's correct. You know, like your school districts, they can take the full, full 30-something percent. We can only take 5.5. So there has been so much growth that will hit that 5.5. And that's why, you know, our budget forecast for this year really won't, or this coming year really won't change, but that's correct. And, you know, we're the only county, counties are the only, only ones that are hit with that 5.5 requirement.
Okay. And didn't we, I thought that Boulder County had debruised.
We did. We did, but this is not a Tabor measurement. This is a separate, you know, this has nothing, actually, nothing to do. It's the, it started with the Gallagher Amendment years back, and the Gallagher Amendment is separate than Tabor. So yes, we're debruised, so the debruising means we can keep our revenues, any excess revenues, you know, if we, if we collect extra, extra fees or anything like that, we get to keep them. Whereas, you know, the state, you get your Tabor refund, they're not debruised, right? You get your Tabor refund. We don't have to refund them back. But the Gallagher Amendment, totally separate, that we can only, we can only, we don't collect it. We, we have a, we can only set our mill levy up to the 5.5 increase. We don't have to give anything back because we're not even allowed to collect it, if that makes sense. Tabors collect, you know, Tabor refunds are collected revenues. We're not even allowed to collect them. We have to stop our mill levy ask at 5.5.
Okay, thank you. And then, so, so then the county expenses, what you're showing us is the county expenses are increasing at a more rapid rate than that 5.5%.
Exactly. And it's, yeah, and there's other revenues, you know, some general fund revenues in there. But to be honest, property taxes is our bread and butter. So the other, the other revenues go up, they go down. But really, general fund is defined by property taxes, as well as some of our other funds, like HHS, Housing Human Services has a lot of property taxes in there as well. So I always like to remind everybody that when we all write our check to the, you know, Boulder County Treasurer or escrow pays our check to the Boulder County Treasurer, what a lot of our public doesn't understand, and I wouldn't either if I didn't work at the county, right, is that when you write the check to Paul Wiseman Treasurer, 25% of it stays at the county. The rest, 75%, even though you're writing the check, he's then cutting checks to all our school districts and all their other districts. So what you pay to Boulder County doesn't stay with Boulder County. Only 25% does.
Right. And, and you said that the biggest driver of that increase over 5.5% is personnel and benefits. Are there any other major drivers that you would point to?
Capital. You know, we have a lot of capital requests. I'm, I'm part of the, the committee that, you know, we look at all the projects, both IT projects, software projects, and actual capital building projects. And, I mean, the, the asks are endless, and none of them are bad asks. They're all wonderful projects, and some of them are absolutely necessary because of technology progress. So that's another big area. The board is going to kind of try to hold the line. We are behind on some of our projects. So the thought is, you know, unless it's mandated, unless something is out of, we're out of compliance or, you know, that, for example, software product is at end of life, those type of things happen to happen. But all the new things that would benefit us, we're going to try to hold off and catch up on projects that are not finished and then only add the things that are statutory mandated at this point. You know, a catch-up year would be very valuable, but there are some things on there. For example, the assessor with this new, you know, new, all kinds of, there's all kinds of new property tax guidelines she has to follow. Her software isn't going to do what the state is asking her to do. So we can't not give her a software system to comply, or else we can't comply with the state. So, you know, keep that in mind in your asks, anything that, again, state mandated statutes, those would be the top items. I see that, Daphne, your hand's up.
Um, yeah, I think actually you just answered my question with the last sentence, so thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
Hey, Ramona, the first two graphs that you showed us regarding fund balance, that assumes HH or it does not assume HH?
That does not assume HH. So, yeah, that is without HH. We won't be able to really look at what it would look like with that passage until end of August when Cindy Braddock, the assessor, gives us what she considers final numbers. So, yeah, that is, that's, we wanted to show it without HH so that we know that we have an issue regardless. So, so basically, the board is saying, we're holding the line regardless of what happens. But hopefully, you know, hopefully, if we, if we make some changes now in some area, we're not trying to resolve this issue this year. That's not, that's not practical. It's not possible. We just need that, you know, the board just wants to see that gap narrowing, you know, because we may have some one-time influx of revenue. For example, we're still trying to pull in some flood revenue from FEMA from 2009. But one-time revenue doesn't change the look of the graph, but it'll help. So, yeah, as long as we start seeing that line closing in, you know, we've got time to fix it.
And then, so, you know, when you look at that fund balance slide, it looks like you're, you're overspending your revenues in the 26 and beyond by the 40 million a year. Let's just say it's 40 million a year, maybe different.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
And so would have, you know, I mean, I know it's too early to kind of start planning for that, but I'm just like curious, would this equity-based budgeting, or, you know, maybe it takes a different form in the future, would it, like, what would you do without, with 10% less of your budget? Let's just say you've got a 250, 280 million dollar budget, and you, you know, just take 10% right off of that. Curious, like, is it too early for that kind of discussion? Or is it really to look to see how much can you move off of the general fund through whatever means, grants or special revenue funds or those other types of? I'm just curious about, you know, that longer-term thinking.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what we're starting this year, like I mentioned, with our sales taxes. Our sales taxes can, can, and at this point, the board feels should, carry more of the burden. So, yeah, it is a little early. So we're trying to get that type of analysis done by mid-September. We have, we have a consultant trying to work on a cost allocation plan as well. We're looking, because this is another thing we're looking at, not just moving expenses, actual expenses, like contracts and things of that sort. We're also looking at charging legally, of course, charging the sales tax funds for overhead that they receive. Like, for example, my office, finance, HR, IT, we all support programs in the general fund, right? Every time you hire somebody in the general fund, I mean, every time you hire somebody, for example, in parks and open space, right? That's work that HR has to put in. It's work that we have to put in to set people up in Oracle. So we're trying to come up with a cost allocation to once a year, also do a transfer from those funds into the general fund. So you're right on. It's exactly what we're trying to do. What can we do for, you know, and what, we've asked everybody, what can we legally? For, you know, and what, we've asked everybody, what can we legally do, even though it's not practical to do it all? Because we don't want to, you know, you know, totally shut down programs either. But you're exactly right. We're starting this year and then we'll be sharing out at the recommended budget time in October, what those numbers might look like. And then we'll give the board the opportunity, of course, to make their decisions in November about how much of that piece of the pie they want to move over. And then it'll give us a good view of how many years will it take to fix this? How drastic is this? And then, of course, with the passage in November of this ballot issue, which, I mean, in all honesty, we do believe it'll pass. I mean, it's a decrease in property taxes. I, I don't think it's going to, you know, get many no votes, to be honest. However, if you read it real well, it's kind of a little bit of a wash because it also reduces your Tabor refund. It's really complicated. So I, but I don't know if, you know, folks will read that or really want to research it that much, but there is an offset at the state level that you may not get as much of a Tabor refund either from the state. Sometimes I feel like it's above my pay grade. I'm sorry, what's that?
Oh, um, can you remind us the sustainability pa, um, tax runs through when? And then the open space tax is up for renewal, isn't it?
Yeah, there's actually four different open space taxes. One piece of it is up for renewal. Um, it'll be on the twen, it'll be on this twenty twenty-three ballot, um, um, into perpetuity. I believe that's how they're going to write that one. Um, the others, I think thirty, twenty, some of them go out to twenty, ooh, off the top of my head, Emily, I'm not sure if you know either. I think it's twenty thirty. It's twenty thirty. The, the other taxes go out to twenty thirty. So we've got some more time on those. Um, now again, they also support the bonds. So we, we issued bonds to buy open space on all of these, and the bonds also expire in twenty thirty. So, you know, if those get extended past twenty thirty, then we'd be, you know, not spending it on past debt. So that would be really great. Um, but yeah, that one is up. And, and sustainability, uh, I'll put it in the chat because I don't want to take a lot of time. I'll look it up. Um, it has maybe five more years. Um, but most likely what, you know, what normally happens is we put them back on the ballot to extend them. Or sometimes though, um, as you know, sometimes it's to repurpose them depending on what's happening at the county. Um, there'll be some repurposing, I think, this year, um, on another tax that's expiring. The offender management tax, the alt, the alt sentencing tax is expiring. And, um, that will potentially, most likely, actually, actually, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, that'll be put on the ballot as a repurpose for housing. You know, no long, no longer for alt sentencing because that, that building will be, um, the ground is broken, as you probably know, that'll, that'll be happening real soon.
Yeah. Thank you, Ramona.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I feel like I took a lot of your time. I know you only have an hour. It's five oh five.
You appreciate it.
Yeah, send me, send me any questions, Emily, any questions. I'll put this in the chat and, um, yeah, enjoy the rest of your meeting and yeah, feel free, reach out anytime.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rita, do you mind putting, uh, our power back up? No, you have to go back, go back to teams. So do the, um, the person review to taskbar, go back to teams. There you go. And then reshare, re-correct one now. It's just fine.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to rush through now. Um, so if you have any questions, let me know as we go. Um, Lexi and Desiree may join in, but since we're going to be going fairly quickly, may not. Um, so real quick, will you go to the next slide, please? Um, so we're going to start talking about the budget process. So first thing, just touching base on the budget timeline, we can see upfront in the beginning of the year, we went through program exception requests. Um, and that helped us review and finalize our requests. And then we were able to actually have our amended budget to in July. I just want to send a subtle special thank you to Desiree for attending and taking on that meeting because I had last minute, uh, personal thing that came up. So thank you, Desiree, for doing that. Um, you saw and heard from Ramona and Emily that the county released their twenty twenty-four budget information in June, and we were on a much tighter timeline to get the work done. Um, but this is going back to what their expectations are going forward. So we received that information and then the budget team worked to prep those documents and got them out in July, um, to teams. And then we workshop those documents and now we're having our budget work session with you all based on what we workshopped. Um, in September, Lexi will do a department presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. If there are any specific asks that we have, every department in the county will do that. Um, and that is related to county funding. Then we have a couple of months off and we say off loosely because that means we'll be doing work behind the scenes just to make sure that we're all good to go. And then both, um, the Board of Health and the county will adopt the final budgets in December. And that also takes us back to the prior scheduling that was in place before last year, uh, when things got a little bit hectic.
Go to the next slide, please, Rita.
Okay. So, um, just want to talk to you some more about the overall process. This year we focused on six major areas. Um, so when it came to the specification, we pulled from quite a few data sources and understanding our upcoming priorities helped us first align what we were planning for the twenty twenty-four budget. Then in terms of development, we, um, our overall approach and our data in, input changed slightly. We did remove some of the overall spreadsheets that we were using because last year we did more of a baseline with our teams to help get them up, um, up to snuff on some of the things that had been budget-wise, but we didn't feel like we needed to go into that lengthy of a process again. Um, and so we also ended up reducing some of the meetings. Uh, then we had analysis sent to the teams, the teams reviewed. Um, and then we met with those that wanted to, others just sent their feedback. So again, that was an area where we did um, a more effective, efficient approach. Um, then we input all the changes and vet those to updates across the different data sources that we had been pulling from. And then our implementation was our overall twenty twenty-four estimated budget. I did want to acknowledge that we did this year receive a lot of kind and supportive feedback on the continual process improvements that we've been making. Um, so there was appreciation of the support, ease of use and time that staff put into assisting in updating everyone um, with the budget information. Okay, so there's a lot here. Um, will you go to the next slide, please, Rita? If it is italicized, I'll cover it on the next slide. Um, it's a lot of information, but I'm going to touch on just a few of these. So we wanted to break out key considerations that are going to be impacting our budget in twenty twenty-four based on internal and external, and some of those are funding, um, and some of those are systematic. So the first one is acknowledging shifts in ARPA and S-TAX. Um, as you may be aware, the majority of our COVID funding wraps December of twenty twenty-three. Um, but we are receiving an increase in MBH and family ARPA funding that started in twenty twenty-three and will go to twenty twenty-five, mid-twenty twenty-five. We also were able to strategically make changes in our X-Tax use, um, which actually had minimal financial increase on the sustainability program. But we looked at coverage, um, in what was eligible with S-Tax as well as where we had funding gaps and were able to make adjustments in those areas. The next one I'm going to go down to is those overall county proposals. You heard about those briefly from, um, Emily and Ramona. There's the three percent proposals, um, which I will acknowledge was news to me that that's not till twenty twenty-five. So we're very excited about that. Um, the training one K, when we did our analysis, um, it's only for FTEs, it's not hourly's included, but we wanted to acknowledge because of the values that we hold in BCPH that we want that average to be across the board, not just with our FTEs, but also with our hourly's. The other consideration around the one K training is that it's not just the training, it's also room and board, um, travel, all of that. So really at the end of the day, that's, that eats up a lot of training. Um, but when we did our analysis, we're actually already over the one K. So we're already doing good in that realm. And then we are taking a look at that space that Ramona touched on briefly, um, which is to reduce our operating, um, and increasing our salary as our number of individuals that are actually covered so that we can get to, um, fuller coverage. I'm not going to say a hundred percent because sometimes that's not possible, but fuller coverage on our individuals, um, that have unsustainable funding sources. Okay. So the next one is the annual compensation and benefit impacts. This is something that we still don't know and they slightly touched on this as well. Is that for annual compensation right now, what our HR is estimating is a possible three point five on both merit and COLA. But there's not, um, any updates on that and we won't know till the fall. So what we're presenting to you with, will without a doubt change by the time we present in December because of the numbers that we receive. The other thing is that right now we have a forty-two percent benefit rate. So that's like insurance, all of those types of benefits. It hasn't changed over the last year, which is not typical. Um, we typically see a change like about around June. We haven't seen anything. So, um, we're expecting that to change as well. And we've reached out again to get an update on that one. Um, we do want to acknowledge that there have been FTE moves in coverage. So there has been a decrease in our COVID and EPI roles as well as a decrease with breastfeeding and program. And I know I'm going very quick, but I just want to say that we want to thank those staff for all of their amazing contributions. Um, that will be moving on. The other area is, um, we have anticipated budget tools. So as we've shared with you, we are working off an Excel sheet with consistent rates. Um, as an example, I think two weeks ago, there was a formula break that caused us three hours of rework. Um, and that is a pretty consistent thing that's occurring with our Excel sheet. We have supports within the county that have tried to help us. Um, but basically what they've told us is that our spreadsheet is too much. Um, the other consideration that's occurring is that.
Yes. Didn't we, do we have the software and it just wasn't implemented? Is that the issue?
So that was the next thing.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I know I'm rushing. I'm so sorry. Um, so we have, uh, the county brought in new applications such as Oracle and OpenGA. Um, and once those were brought in, what we found unfortunately is that the modules that they decided to pay for versus not pay for are ones that don't benefit BCPH and what we need is a strong grant-based organization. So what we will be looking for and as part of our strategic planning, um, work that we've been doing is being able to find an application or opening up more modules that will speak to the ones that the county has. So it will create more work, but it will support what our needs are and what our program managers' needs are. Okay, I'll take a deep breath if anybody wants any other question. Okay. I'm going to move into indirect rate and coverage. So the other thing is we, as an LPHA, get a new indirect rate every year via negotiation with the state. That is to cover admin and SIP-based roles for salary and operating. And we just want to acknowledge that the last two years at least, it has barely covered salaries um, in terms of the indirect rate that we have. So that's another consideration that is playing into our twenty twenty-four budget.
Can I just mention a structural issue with the indirects too, is that, um, our ability to apply the indirect rate consistently is pretty variable. Um, we have a lot of grants, a lot of funders who say, um, we will only venge ten percent. So we're looking at how do we strategically address that problem?
What is the indirect rate that like you all need for sustainability?
So it ebbs and flows. Um, but if we were able to get basically the rate that we receive from the state is if everybody were doing it at that rate. So right now it's twenty point seven six. But quite a few of our, um, funders ask for a ten percent or even a five. So.
Five.
We need to be cheaper.
Well, and when we do, I mean, a lot of the funding that we get from different county entities, there's zero, of course.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So we're also looking at proposals in that space and we may have some updates for you as well, um, in December. The final thing I just want to acknowledge is we just completed our recent audit. We will be doing a presentation to you in the upcoming board meetings um, on the audit. But the big thing, um, that occurred this year that I was not aware of until Desiree brought it clearly to my attention, um, is that it runs exactly at the same time as we're doing budget work. So it has a huge impact on our financial staff and it will not change. This will be the way it is going forward. Um, also because there have been increases to the GASB, there are a lot more questions that are coming from monitors. So it is very intense level of work that is needing to occur, um, while we are also trying to prep our budget. So next year we will seek more support, um, from the county as much as possible. And we will be doing some brainstorming about other ways that we can build in, um, capacity for our team. Okay, that was very quick, but was there anything else on here that you wanted me to touch? Okay. So, um, we know that with all the information that was provided from Ramona and Emily and even some of the insight that I provided, there was a bit of doom and gloom that it sounded like, but we wanted to also share with you some of the things that we're super excited about with our upcoming priorities. Um, so that includes, we have grants management work. Right now we have a contracted individual that's on with us to help build better structure around the grants that we are applying for. Um, how to go out for those grants in a more strategic fashion and also to make decisions about more sustainable funding. And then we are reviewing funding to have a grants manager come on, which would be a huge asset for coordinators and program managers to help with the overall management and flow of those aspects. We have some other positions that we're super excited about that are listed on here. Um, those include our policy position, workforce coordinator, healthy homes, climate justice coordinator. We'll also be expanding in the health contamination and childhood led spaces. And then we are seeing some increases with our mental health, um, mental behavioral health and family connects positions and roles.
And I want to be clear that we have not committed to those positions yet. It will depend on how things are looking. But those are the spaces that we are looking at, um, that we feel like would produce pretty important value. And the healthy homes and climate justice coordinator positions are already in place. Uh, those were, one of them was a replacement and one of them was a new grant. Sorry.
That was actually my next bullet point. You've got it. You've got it. I don't even have to touch that one. Okay. So the next thing I want to talk about is our strategic budgeting, um, which you heard a little bit about in the last slide, but we are really excited about the continuing progress that we're seeing in this place because we are building culture, principles, tools and plans around how we think about our overall budget. Um, that means better communications, better transparency, better decision-making, um, and even better forecasting and how we're making those decisions. We also are increasing specific focus on, um, revenues. So we're looking at fees that could come in from vital records and bramming to health, which you're going to hear more about, um, and even Medicaid. And I know that Medicaid is actually really reimbursement, but the way that we count it in the budget is under our fees line. So I'd just like to provide that clarity because I know many of you work around Medicaid and are like, that's not a fee. Um, program exception requests, we're doing a better job of prioritizing and creating consistency around review and really pulling our management team in to make those decisions. Um, we're also increasing our equitable operating analysis, making sure that the operating budgets that everybody have really lay out nicely where in the past. Okay, you should be good. Sorry. Okay. Thank you, Jordan. Um, okay. So the other thing, there's a lot in here, but I'm going to skip forward. The other thing that's on here is coverage of gap funding. Um, so in the third quarter, as you may recall, we are going to submit a request to the county, um, hopefully to cover gap funding that occurred in our grants because of the high increase in compensation. Um, Jerry, our budget analyst continues to do a lot of deep work in this space. Initially, when we analyzed this, we were thinking we were, we're going to need to ask for about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, as of May, we were down to two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, so she'll do another poll soon, um, to continue to see what that is. We will also be sending over, um, vacancy savings data to the Board of County Commissioners to help them understand how that approach works and why that, that request is coming. Okay. And I'm going to go even more fast. Um, okay, so. So the numbers that you see here, can you go to the next slide, please? The next slide, um, shows our twenty twenty-four FTE changes. Initial estimate, you can see there's quite a bit of a decrease. Um, we see that happening because of that conversation around the ARPA um, cliff as well as, um, some of the EPI work that was happening with ELC two. Uh, we do expect this to change by December, um, again, because of some of the other areas that we should, we identified. If we can find the funding, then maybe new positions that are coming on. If we can find the funding, they may be new positions that are coming on. Okay, next slide. This slide just shows a comparison, hand over hand of the years. We continue to show you before COVID, during COVID, and then where we are. It's getting really big, so we might cut this down, but we wanted to show you at least one more year of this, so you can see pre-pandemic numbers. The other thing that's going to change on here is where you see that special projects line, where that really came in is during the pandemic because it was where like ARPA or large vast funding sources came in and we needed to acknowledge it in another space. We are actually shifting that out now that ARPA is coming to an end, and that is becoming our overarching org that identifies needs across the entire department. So not just for one program, but what are the entire needs that we're seeing. What will also be included in there are things like Board of Health needs, so you'll start to see that change in next year. The only other caveat I would give with this as you dig deeper into it or look at it more closely is that some of our programs have budgets or grants that are actually listed, say, in special projects or in another org, but they still get the funding from it. So you may look at their expenses and be like, wow, they have way higher expenses than their revenue. It could be the fact that the funds that will help them cover those expenses are just showing up in another program. And that is part of one of the difficulties with our Excel sheet. It doesn't allow us to break that out better. Okay, not much on this, it's just another comparison. The next two slides are actually going to do a little bit more comparison and review to help break down what these are saying, but these are just hand over hand, again, year over year, revenues and expenses. Sorry, Rita, I did not say change the slide. You are on it. Okay, can you change to the next one, please? Okay, so this is taking the previous data and putting it in a way that we can see a little bit better about where the funding source analysis comes from. First of all, our total estimated revenue for BCPH in 2024 is roughly a million less than 2023 revenue estimates. You can see county funding is the highest funding source for BCPH in 2024. That includes salaries, operating Genesis Fund, and also those grants that we were talking about. The other thing you'll notice is the federal funding has gone down significantly as we see that ELC grant wrap up in 2024. This covered a portion of Communicals' epidemiologists' work.
All right, just to, this feels like so important because of how much we rely on the county and what we just heard Ramona say, which is why I think it's like, yeah, it's really, I think, really helpful to have Ramona set the stage and then see this and think like, oh, God, we've got a problem. So this feels important, just want to acknowledge that.
It just curious, I know it'll have to this year, but are we starting to think about if there had to be a 3% cut?
Oh, yeah, we will be responding to the county's budget proposal with, you know, some ideas that we could see about where that might happen.
We apparently just need a public health dedicated tax because that just takes care of so many problems.
We might miss that window of opportunity. Well, I mean, I think the other thing to recognize in the county funding is that there's quite a bit of that money is in ARPA funds right now, and we are perfectly aware of what those spending lists look like, and we are actively working for what that plan for transition will be.
Okay, next slide. So this just aligns with what we heard from Ramona in terms of where those expenses really lay. Salaries is 78% of our expenses, and BCPH, 12% is that contractual, and 10% is combined operations. So then we're going to take a look at our estimated fund balance over on the right side. So we are estimating a 20, for 2024, a fund balance of 11.2%. Within that fund balance, we want to acknowledge that we are already planning to pull $2.1 million from our reserves. So you heard Ramona saying that, that they, year over year, use their reserves to balance their budget, we do, too. So that's going to impact our fund balance. We also want to acknowledge, because this came up in our audit, so we're openly telling you, and it's recorded and it's in a document, that on our budget information, each year we have had 500,000 committed emergency contingency funding since ARPA started, or since COVID started. That number still is listed there. That decision to change that is, comes from the executive director to you, and you all vote on whether or not you want that to change. The other thing is that we have in here potential rent liability restricted reserves of 65,000, because next year we're going to have some facility changes that are going to come up, and our auditor suggested that we put that in here. Okay, so then we want to show you a little bit of information related to fund balance levels. So there's a chart showing you from 2016 to 2023. Over at the left, the fund balance levels information listed here. BCPH has a required reserve level of 5%. Standard government practice, specifically Colorado, is at least 15 with an average of, sorry, 11 with an average of 15, not to go over 22. If you look at the historical trend of what's listed on here, we're at 9%. And so our available fund balance is 3 million with 11.2. So there's a couple things here just to be aware of. The challenge for local government is fund balance is calculated off of prior year's data months in advance of year-end. So the key is to use the estimate of the value, but understand that that's not a real number. A reasonable level of fund balance provides necessary cushion for unforeseen expenditures or revenue shorts and helps ensure adequate cash flows available to meet the operating costs of the agency. As we heard from Ramona about what's coming up, this is definitely allowing us to have cushion in this space as we have more volatile years coming up and being able to plan adequately. So the other thing is that we balance the use of our reserves towards a sustainable fund balance. So that allows us to finance operations in the subsequent year, especially when we already know that we are having to use reserves year over year, like we saw on the previous one. So finally, it allows us to mitigate any major financial impacts or non-recurring expenses.
2024 is the beginning of '24? When the books close for '23? Or does that include everything at the end of '24 with the gap filling for the department's budget?
We are not including the county covering the gap. So that's with the gap not being covered, we're at 11.2. Okay, next slide. Okay, so really quickly, the county is going to meet with us next week with Ramona and Emily to go over the proposal and memo and our initial budget. We need to hear any Board of Health considerations or decisions or questions around our budget, and we will continue to talk about priorities with the management team. Lexi will have the presentation to the Board of County Commissioners in September. We will present the budget resolution to you in December. And do you have any feedback or questions?
Where do these reserves come from? Really? How much is in the reserve that you can just pull?
So, so our reserves are the, so we have 2 million that we're already pulling to cover unsustainable funds.
Like where, how much is in the reserve? Or here is that?
It's kind of in the abyss. So we have 2 million that we're already pulling to cover, but then on top of that, we have 3 million that's unrestricted, that's available.
Beyond.
Yes. So that gives you an idea.
At what level of our reserve? Are we at 5% or more?
We're at, right now, we're estimating for 2024 that we'll be at 11.2.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I definitely, you know, sitting here thinking like, what kudos? Would we shift a sustainability tax that is part of public health? I mean, I know we already shifted a bunch of environmental health to us folks.
Yeah, so we kind of get told how much we're allowed to ask for sustainability tax, but the reality is that the commissioners make the final decision later in the year, and we do have some concerns about what they're going to decide. So we can get, you know, a tacit approval for what we're asking for, but the reality is we have to wait until the commissioners make a decision in November, because I think you heard Ramona say that they're looking at, they might want to redeploy S-TAX, for instance.
Right, right.
So that's, you know, an example of a caution that we have.
So to answer your question just a little bit more, Landry, when you said where do reserves come from, it's typically our revenues that's...
Okay, so it's the 11 point, it's just funny that this is 11.2 and then this is 11.2. So that's, we're using basically the leftover, the entire reserve from the year prior, is what you're saying?
Can you go back to the slide so I can see what Landry's?
So what's up? Before that. So we're essentially, we're essentially using all of that, and then we're anticipating that it'll be bashed by the end of 2024, is what you're saying?
No, so it's 11.2 that's listed there, that's the 2024 number, so I'm just showing you the same number on the next.
Okay.
But then you will be pulling those amounts on the right from that 11.2, so year end of 2024, assuming no new revenues.
It could be zero.
You'll be under 10. No, you'll be...
At 3 million.
Yeah, sorry, it's 5.
So within the 11.2, what has already been applied is the 2.1 in reserves, the 500 committed, and the 65 restricted.
The 11.2 is after that's already been accounted for.
What has not been fully applied to the 11.2 yet is if we don't receive like the gap funding. Some of our program exception requests have not been applied yet, so that's why we're having those conversations with our management team. So those are some of the aspects, as well as some funding that we still have floating out there that we haven't heard back on, so that could also...
Like the S-Tax decisions.
Yeah.
And if you were to add all those numbers up, 500,000, what are we talking? Because you said the gap was down to 2 something.
237. And then our exception requests, I think they range, so that's why we have the priority meeting where we're like, it could be really large, but how do we be more sustainable about this? I will say, I know we're over time, and I'll try to wrap this really quickly, but what's been really cool about the management team with the exception requests is that we're taking a more global look, not just a, my program needs this and my program needs this, but I, oh, wow, this is the state we're in. And then everybody's going back to the drawing table and saying, okay, where can we ship funding to actually cover more of this? So it's been exciting to see those changes come in, don't we?
We need to cover more changes.
I'm going to actually leave the... I think it was good in the background.
I definitely will be rooting for you and watching this process play out over the rest of the year, but in terms of the presentation and how little time you're going to present, I think this was fantastic. It conveyed a fair amount of information in a way that you could go back and look at it and say, oh, yeah, okay, I understand what they're talking about, so I'll do it that way.
And it's adjustable.
Yes.
And it's a mandate guide at the same time.
I would like to call out, I would like to do a much deeper dive with you personally on this. I don't feel like I fully understand what it takes, and I'm, mostly my indication is I hear a lot of like, we need to make trade-offs, there's headwinds coming. I'm still not totally crisp on what trade-offs we're now needing to make. Your turn.
Yeah.
To stave off the longer-term impact that I think we know is coming. We can wish for things to change, but the reality is they likely will not, so we will need to adjust accordingly. Right, and so I just want to understand that mitigation strategy. I don't think I fully got it yet.
And don't we usually put the detailed budget in October or November? Sorry, I forgot the timeline.
So I don't know what we typically do.
I'm sorry, I'm going to figure that out.
But I would love to give you more information once we have some of those key components from the county already figured out, because that would provide a better understanding.
Yeah, Catherine, you say when the time is right. Like I don't, I'm similarly, I'm not sure when to insert, but want to, I do want to understand the rest medications.
Yeah, and we're happy to share with you a huge heap of strategies that we're using that's like, okay, how do we handle this issue? What kind of revenue would this kind of a change produce? Where are we asking for funds for two years from now when this large piece of funding goes away? A lot of those conversations, I will tell you, we are not counting on getting any additional county funding this year.
Yeah, I think that was pretty clear.
Yeah. So it's working, you know, we have clarity on what our mandate is and how do we, how do we manage within those limits?
Yes.
But we'd love to talk to you about that.
Yeah.
Before we close this out, though, I do, I really want to do a shout-out to Desiree and Catherine and that team. Jerry, they have done a remarkable job of increasing the level of transparency and creating really rich conversations in our management team about how do we work together as an agency to achieve our goals. And they've made an awful lot of changes, and it's really, I think it's been very fruitful, and I think, I think our management team has really appreciated it.
Thank you.
Good job, Desiree, too. Sorry, I didn't look at you while I was talking.
Our team.
All right. Thanks, everybody, as we make our transition now. Yep, so the regular Board of Health meeting will start as soon as we kind of wrap up. If you are doing virtually and want to attend that, there is a separate meeting link on the Board of Health website with your internal staff. It's in a separate calendar invite. See you soon.